The March 20th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we have an open podium opportunity for residents to address the city council on issues related to city government. Typically, our meetings are the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and open podium is from approximately 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chambers. If you wish to speak to the council at that time, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your subject matter that you wish to discuss, your name and your phone number. If time permits after scheduled speakers, then we have unscheduled speakers that can come up and address the council. These portions of the meeting are not recorded nor are they televised. Just one second here. Okay, we have a proclamation first from Southwest Transit. Mr. Getchell?
Yes, I will turn this over to Mr. Simic, Director of Southwest Transit, and Mr. Jay Rowe, the Chair of the Southwest Transit Board.
Mayor and council members, I'm actually going to defer this one to Jay. He has a statement to read, and we have an award to present.
My glasses out. Nancy, you've known me when I didn't need them, so... Well, it's an honor to be in the Eden Prairie Council Chambers. So, I'm actually a city council member in Chaska. So, I said, walked in, I said, "You guys are so formal." I don't think we ever wear suits to our council meetings. But as Eden Prairie High School always tells us, you know, we're farmers and countrymen out there, so... But it's great to be here. So, tonight, we're here to honor a very special person, your mayor, Nancy Tyrell-Lukens. It's our Distinguished Service Award for 2017, and this is an appreciation and gratitude for her 21 years of leadership and dedication provided to Southwest Transit. We want to recognize Mayor Tyrell-Lukens for 21 years of outstanding leadership. She began as a representative for the city of Eden Prairie on the commission in January of 1997. During her tenure, she helped make the organization one of the top transit agencies operating in the United States. Under her guidance, the agency increased its annual ridership by over 300 percent, reduced its annual cost per passenger, increased its annual fare box revenue, and provides one of the most reliable and safest transit operations in the country. We consistently receive the highest credit and audit rating available, and we continue to achieve customer approval ratings of over 99 percent. Nancy was the Chair of Southwest Transit for six years and oversaw many accomplishments and innovations such as the Southwest Phone App, the Prime Demand Response Service, the agency branding, the transit-orientated developments such as Southwest Station and the Chan-Hassen Village, and the design and development of four award-winning transit stations. The implementation of technology like AVL and Wi-Fi currently used on all of our transit vehicles, and the delivery of service to special events like the Minnesota State Fair, Twins Games, Gophers-Vikings Games, and a little event that happened in Chaska, the 2016 Rider Cup. As a Southwest Transit Commissioner, the agency was honored twice as the Minnesota System of the Year, numerous national awards for transit safety and security, and was the National Transit System of the Year. We just want to show our gratitude, Nancy, for the years of leadership and dedication provided to Southwest Transit. You've been a tireless fighter and leader for us all the way, and we want to present you with just a little token of our appreciation and our thanks.
Yay! This is really nice. Having been on Southwest Transit for so many years, it really seems like a family there. And I think that probably one of the best things that I did was to be part of the committee that hired Len Simic as our Director, because he has certainly set the bar high for op. dot transit agencies within the Twin Cities and nationally. It's been great working with all of you, great doing everything we can to provide an innovative, efficient, really high-quality service to the residents of Eden Prairie and Chan-Hassen and Chaska and all the little people that sneak in from other cities and ride our service downtown, because it's such a wonderful service. So, it's been wonderful for me. Every time I see a Southwest Transit bus, I feel really good about all of the work that we have all done as Commissioners, and several of the council members have also been serving on the commissions too. So, I miss it, but I found other things to do on Thursday night, so, thank you.
Yeah, we'll turn this over, but I also wanted to thank Councilmember Brad Aho and Councilmember Ron Case for your service to the commission currently.
Thank you, Jay.
I'll turn it over to our CEO, Len Simic.
Okay, I'm going to be brief. I'm just going to kind of cover a couple of the highlights for 2017. One of the biggest accomplishments last year for us was to execute the agreements for the Southwest LRT. So, the state seems to have done their part. We have done our part. Now, there's just one billion parts left to go, and that's the federal funding. But it was a long, three-plus years of negotiation, and it wasn't always just about money, although money was important, that we did receive the fair value for what we're giving up, which would be Southwest Station. There were other things in terms of our service protections that we were able to build into this agreement, as well as a number of other things, and our counselor, Rick Rosso, also helped with that, and so we were very pleased to get that accomplished by the end of the year. So, again, from our standpoint, the pathway is clear, and now we just have to wait it out to see if it does happen. We also led efforts for the entire suburban transit providers in receiving the first increase in state funding that we've had since 2008. So, we've been held rather flat over that same period, and we were able to get the legislature to move on actually dedicating additional funds. For us, it's just shy of a million dollars, so it is a substantial amount to an operation of our size. So, that is something that can't be taken away, at least not without further legislation. So, we also feel very good about that. Ridership, we are up again, which is always good. That's one of the things we measure each year is our success based on how many people we're transporting. Our express ridership was flat. It's actually been flat for a few years, but where our growth really has occurred is in our prime service. Our prime is basically our form of Uber or Lyft, and it is growing, it's actually growing almost out of control. We have no additional vehicles or drivers. That's why we're in discussions right now with Lyft to come in and partner with us in providing this service, because it is in high demand. Just a couple of other things. We did secure $250,000, which allowed us to provide Saturday prime service. That is a state grant that they're providing to us, really on some last-mile services. And the last one, I'll leave it, well, the State Fair. Again, my plug for the State Fair, it's the only way to go to the State Fair is by taking Southwest Transit. Again, we provided 100,000 rides to and from the fair. Last but not least, you heard in Jay's remarks for Nancy, we have consistently hit 99 percent customer satisfaction in our customer surveys. Last year, we hit 100 percent. So, that was the first time we had 100 percent. That one individual, we didn't let ride on the day of the survey. So, we did. So, that's a first for us, so we're very, very happy with that. So, that's kind of a very brief highlight of our year in review. I'll answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, thank you for the opportunity.
Any questions?
I would just say a comment that we're very proud of our service that you guys provide, and I think that you do a great service to our communities, and we just thank you for all that you're doing, and we're just, we're very pleased with everything that comes out of Southwest Transit.
Thank you.
And continue to call on us when you need help advocating.
And money.
Legislators, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Lothammer, you've got a donation coming?
Yes, Your Honor, council members. This is from OSR Physical Therapy. They have donated $750 towards three different events. One is Fall Into Fitness, the other one is our indoor triathlon, and the third one is the Senior Center BBQ. So, we appreciate their gifts to help support all of those activities going forward.
Wonderful. Are they here tonight?
They are not here.
Okay, all right. Thank you to OSR Physical Therapy. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation from OSR Physical Therapy of $750 for Parks and Recreation Special Events.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to add?
Mayor, I have two, or I have two items.
You have two items?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
One of them's yours. Under Reports of Councilmembers, we have a resolution for the Mayor's Water Challenge.
Okay.
So, you're going to talk about that.
I'm going to talk about that, and then I have a recognition of a Prudential Spirit of Community Award to do.
And then I have an item that I'd like to add under Councilmember Reports.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry. I keep jumping in. Go ahead.
I also have a report.
Okay, and then, Mr. Getchell, do you have something to add under your report?
I don't. I have something for consent.
You're just adding things under?
I do. Under your reports, right. Under consent, you remember at the last council meeting, you approved the second reading for Shields, and that was dependent on signatures from other lenders or interested parties, affected parties by tonight's meeting. So, as an alternative to that, we actually have on the consent agenda, some of the language that was in the development agreement that would have been consented by the other agencies are actually taken out of the development agreement, and there are separate agreements for your approval. So, the question, or the action is adopting a resolution approving these other agreements. So, the, basically, the language in the development agreement, there wasn't any substantial changes. It's just that some of that language is pulled out for other parties that had to consent to the agreement, and there are separate agreements with them.
Okay, but the agreements are still there.
They are.
So, this is item?
And they're actually, I'm sorry, it'd be item N on consent, and then everything is in front of you on Goldenrod.
Okay. Any other changes? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held Tuesday, March 6th?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections?
Yes, there is a, I do have some corrections for the workshop, just very minor, but it says that I was talking about the FDA, and it should be the FTA, and that's a big, big difference, so... One, one letter difference, but twice it's mentioned in there that the FDA, but it should be the FTA, Federal Transit Administration.
Got it.
So, I want, I would like that changed.
Okay.
Do you have anything to say about the Federal Drug Administration at all?
I have nothing to say about the FDA.
Okay, all in favor of the workshop minutes as amended?
Aye.
I abstained since I was...
Okay. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council meeting held the same date?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Once again, I'm abstaining.
Motion passes. Consent calendar A through item N that was just added. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Does anybody have anything to pull for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Brings us to our first and only public hearing, the vacation of part of the drainage and utility easement dedicated in Blue Stem Hills Third Edition. Mr. Getchell?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You may recall you had a prior action at a previous meeting to approve a revised conservation easement at this property in Blue Stem Hills Third Edition. So, now, we're following up with vacating a drainage and utility easement that is not necessary. We've been able to adjust the conservation easement to deal with the encroaching deck and porch to the benefit of the homeowner, and then now we have a public hearing that needs to be held to eliminate this, or vacate this particular drainage and utility easement, and then there's a resolution for vacation following the public hearing.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the vacation of this easement?
So, seeing none, I would move that we close the public hearing and adopt the resolution vacating a part of the drainage and utility easement dedicated on Blue Stem Hills Third Edition over Lot 1, Block 1, Hennepin County, Minnesota.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Camen of Claims, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to question?
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tyrell-Lukens?
Aye. Okay, then we get into Reports of Councilmembers, and the first thing I wanted to talk about is the Mayor's Water Challenge, and this is something that we've done, and we've passed a resolution on this for, I don't know, is this our sixth or seventh year doing this? I don't see Joyce anymore, but...
At least our seventh.
Yeah, we've been doing this for a while, so the motion is basically the same, except it acknowledges this as the Seventh Annual National Mayor's Challenge to try to draw attention to the issue of water preservation, purity, and it also gets into just energy goals, things you can do to be more energy efficient and to be part of our more sustainable efforts. So, I'll just read this resolution for you. Whereas the city of Eden Prairie continues to explore ways to manage residential consumption of water and power and to inspire its residents to care for our natural resources, and whereas the city of Eden Prairie can engage in efforts to inspire its residents to become better environmental stewards, and whereas the Seventh Annual National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation presented by the Wieland Foundation and Toyota is a healthy nonprofit competition for cleaner communities and a water use and pollution reduction competition between our cities, and whereas with the encouragement of the mayors of cities that have signed on, residents may register their participation in their city's challenge online by making simple pledges to decrease their water use and to reduce pollution for the period of one year, thereby assisting their cities to apply state and federal water conservation strategies and to target mandated reductions. And whereas from April 1st to April 30th, 2018, the city of Eden Prairie wishes to encourage its residents to take the Mayor's Water Challenge by making a series of online pledges at mywaterpledge.com to reduce their impact on the environment and to see immediate savings in their water, trash, and energy bills. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eden Prairie, the city of Eden Prairie agrees with and supports the Wieland Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation, and the program is to be implemented from April 1st to April 30th, 2018 through a series of communication and outreach strategies to encourage Eden Prairie residents to take the conservation challenge. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes, and again, the event starts April 1st, so as of April 1st, go to mywaterpledge.com and do, take the questionnaire, the little quiz that they have, and if you do that, you are entered automatically for a drawing for, I think it's a car. Traditionally, it's been...
It's been a Prius.
A hybrid or electric car or something like that, yes.
Working their way toward a Tesla.
That's when you'll sign in.
Yes.
Okay, and then the other thing that I wanted to mention, and this came in February, but I neglected to bring it up right away, is we have resident, a youth resident of our community, Ryan Stoltz, who was recently named one of the top youth volunteers in Minnesota for 2018 in the 23rd Annual Prudential Spirit of Community Awards. So, he, he's a great kid, he's very active and does a lot of volunteer work. His father used to be on our planning commission, John, and I would just like to extend our congratulations to him. 29,000 people participated in this year's program, and he was one of the top youth volunteers, so, kudos to Ryan Stoltz. All right, I think that, Ron, you were, Councilmember Case, you were next.
So, I have two brief ones, and Brad, if you want to weigh in on the second one with me, you're welcome to help me do that. But the first one is that last week, Sherri, Councilmember Sherri Butcher-Wickstrom, and I had the opportunity to represent the city in Washington, DC with the National League of Cities, Congress of Cities. It's the opportunity where thousands, I think in our case, we had 2,000 mayors and council members converge on Washington pretty much the same week in March, almost every year. Not only attend classes and do quite a bit of networking, but also on Wednesday morning, go to Capitol Hill and actually lobby our congresspeople and senators on behalf of issues that are near and dear to municipal municipalities. And so Sherri and I had the chance to do that and meet with our new Senator, Tina Smith, and then also Amy Klobuchar. I attended a few sessions. I just wanted to report briefly out, because each one, a couple of them are just FYIs, but a couple of them had a few takeaways I think were significant to us here in Eden Prairie. But the first one I attended was on workforce readiness, and this is something actually that Sherri's quite knowledgeable about because of the work you've done up at Anoka, Hennepin Tech. Am I close to something?
Anoka Technical College.
Well, Anoka, can't be Anoka and Hennepin, so it's Anoka.
I know, isn't it crazy?
Got it. That's pretty hard to, at any rate, the idea that came out of this session is something that they are experts in doing already, and we really already have in mind possibly meeting with our chamber anyway this year, and they just basically suggested convening business representatives, possibly through the chamber, and maybe combining with local educational institutions. We have our Hennepin Tech here, or possibly our public school system, and basically working out the possibility of like an asset map that might show up gaps in employment. And particularly, they're finding across the nation, and I would guess it's very true here, that there are job areas or functions that have very few job applicants, particularly in some of the skill-based trades. And so, being able to at least bring businesses together and face-to-face with some educational groups that might be able to address that. And I thought, not that we have to do something unique or brand-new, but that if we're already planning possibly a meeting with the chamber, this could be one of the topics that ended up in our agenda. I also attended a session on the opioid crisis, which we're all hearing a lot about these days, and I guess the news that's out of Washington today is that the four out of five addicts that had started about a year to two ago, and some data, four out of five heroin addicts actually started with prescription narcotics. That's changing, because we are becoming more evidently effective in tightening up on that, that stream of narcotics, and it's kind of going back to the illegal path again, and they're looking at tightening up on that. But, but the takeaway, and I already talked to JD, and we do it, so we're already ahead of the game, as is often the case with Eden Prairie, but they talked about April 28th is National Prescription Drug Takeback Day, and people across the nation are encouraged to bring in these medications in their medicine cabinet that are old or outdated or not being used, and get rid of them. And so, you have to apply by a certain date. We're on top of it, so I'll just leave, thank you JD for being right on top of that.
And do we still have those disposable bags available for residents who have old pills that they're not using, hydrocodone and things like that, that they want to dispose of safely? You can come in and get one of these pill disposal bags, free of charge, and dispose of them so that they don't get into our water system.
At the front desk?
At City Hall, yeah.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, it's great. No, totally. And just, just the fact that we've heard a lot of that, in the United States, we consume so large a percent of the narcotics, but we're 5% of the world's population, and we consume over 90% of the world's medicinal narcotics. So, there are, it's a complicated issue, and there's, there's a lot of aspects to it, but we can do a little bit from our municipal end, and it sounds like, again, our police department's right on top of it. I also attended a session on tax reform, and it really was, was related directly to the impact on, on cities. In the new tax bill, there is a portion for Opportunity Zones, which is a new income source. I will find out, I'm sure you probably know something about that already, but I would, myself, need to learn more about that, but everyone's up on a panel is quite pleased that private activity bonds were maintained. And the piece of that, I think, that was interesting is private activity bonds can be used for public projects like ports and airports in some cities, but also affordable housing. So, I just thought, I had never heard that as a potential tool. The tax bill itself does put money into the pockets of 83% of Americans with an average gain of $1,100, which is good news for businesses and the business climate. 17% of taxes, therefore, people's taxes will go up. One caveat, though, is that even though it's putting about $100 a month more net into people's pockets, the withholding formula's changed, and people are getting more than $100 withheld, and so next, it won't happen by Election Day, but next tax time, when they're going in, if they're not adjusting their formulas, they're going to get hit with not, with paying more, even though we're not really paying more, but the perception that they paid more. So, the bill might be problematic for cities, they said, if you had some families with lower incomes with lots of children, because their taxes would go up. So, just to, we should be maybe sensitive about that. And then, this is more of a state issue, but then that ends up impacting cities, is that estimating future revenues is becoming very difficult, more difficult for states. I also attended a future of marijuana policy nationally across the country, and there are about six or seven bills going through Congress, and it looked like several of them have a good chance of passing, and they look at things like limiting adult prosecution federally, because so many states are approving it, and they want to adjust that. Prohibiting prosecution for medicinal use, because you can legally do it in one state and then not in another, and they don't want the federal part of that to be prosecuted. Permitting, there's a bill that would permit marijuana use for veterans with PTSD. There's no funding in federal monies for research on it, because it's, it's a Schedule I Controlled Substance, so there's a bill going through to get that changed, so it's not a Schedule I Controlled Substance, and have it be more available so we can actually study. And there are, there are some privately funded research that is actually showing that it's not the gateway drug that people feared. This is all debatable, if people want to take this on later, but, but they were just, the panel was giving back some privately funded research that, that I guess if one is a proponent of marijuana legality across the nation, it was good news for that perspective. And then finally, I attended a session on gun violence prevention. Several bills going through Congress likely won't pass this time. They talked a lot about the verbiage of using gun violence prevention, because a lot of people on all sides of this gun issue can agree on gun violence prevention. Since January 1st this year, so we're not even at three months yet, there have been 10,593 gun incidences in the United States of America. 10,593. So, cities are being encouraged to take initiatives and holding community... So cities are being encouraged to take initiatives and holding community conversations, I think we're trying to do that, I think that's a great idea. I would say, I'd like to even go beyond the Shields conversation, maybe bring in even some type of a public hearing of something where we would actually be able to have a conversation, what else can we do? There are cities, I know that we have statutory limitations in our state, there are cities that are permitted within their state laws to actually ban bump stocks within their ordinances. I guess I'd love to hear back from Rick, is there anything that statutory Plan B city, not tonight, is there anything that statutory Plan B city is permitted to do, and I think we had a look at that? Some cities have passed extreme risk protection laws, allowing people to go into the court, petition the court to go into someone's home, and there's 20 states, I believe, that have passed that and actually removed guns. Both Republican and Democrats are looking at fixing the NICS and ICS, the National Instant Criminal Background Check System, which has all kinds of holes and flaws in it. Right now, there's a 2017 bill that actually penalizes local police agencies for not doing thorough background checks, which is good, that just needs to be tightened and strengthened. So those are just a couple sessions that I attended. I'll let Sherri fill in some of the other areas that you were involved with, but I thought it was a really great, great session overall.
There's a lot going on. Councilmember Wickstrom.
Wait, did you, did you want to weigh in on the?
Oh, yes, real quick, do you mind? Just a second one, really fast.
Sorry.
No, 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 so Brad and I are members of the Lions Club, I'm just looking at my phone, I took notes, and Larry Frisvold came up last night, and he does a volunteer project where they collect eyeglasses that are being thrown away for use in third-world countries and other places, and they just need, they put boxes into churches and, and community areas, and they don't have any evidently in the city of Eden Prairie, and they want, excuse me, I want permission to do that, so do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I would just say that they're, they're small collection boxes, they're a little bit bigger than a shoebox, and people that, that drop their glasses off in there, they take, the Lions take all these in, they aggregate them, and then they have optometrists that actually go through all the glasses, they, they grade them, they show what prescription they are, they, they put them in a bag, and they clean them up, and they're, they kind of refurbish them. And so then they, like Ron said, they ship them off to third-world countries and where they don't have access to glasses, and then they have people that fit, fit people with the proper, the proper glass, glasses, and so it's a great program.
So we thought City Hall, Community Center, and Senior Center. Is that, is there anything that's holding that back? I mean, it seemed like just, they would, they would care for it, they would come and pick them up, okay.
And we thought also possibly Southwest Station, you know, at Southwest Transit have one there as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have a similar arrangement, Toys for Tots, we do battery recycling. I've seen, I've seen cellphones, I've seen the Lions receptacles in other locations as well, so that should be fine.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, sorry, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Wickstrom.
Thanks, Brad, Sherri.
Yes, so I wanted to piggyback with Councilmember Case, because I also attended the meeting and really appreciate the thorough description of what I think are some really important and timely issues that we have. So as I mentioned, we both learned from the many sessions offered on these topics, but one of the most important things we were able to do at the Congressional City Conference is that we were able to advocate with our congressional elected officials, so that we could gain assistance in getting important work done here in our city. And particularly, I think this is really, really good news, and so particularly in the area of funding for the Southwest Light Rail Initiative that we have been working on for literally decades. So that was very, very important. So top of the list for the National League of Cities in terms of advocacy, as well as the Minnesota League of Cities, is the Federal Advocacy for Rebuilding and Reimagining Infrastructure. So our message to federal officials is that we want Congress and the administration to work collaboratively and to work with local governments, so that we can get these local projects accomplished. So we met, as Councilmember Case mentioned, with two of our members of Congress, Senator Amy Klobuchar and Senator Tina Smith. The meeting with Senator Klobuchar was really an incredible meeting. It was basically a sit-down in her private office with what, maybe 10 or 12 people. It was, it was really a time to voice our concerns, but to really be heard, and so it went very, very well. She was able to respond to our concerns about the federal funding for the light rail, or what they're calling new starts, which is what this Southwest Light Rail project is. And she believed and was very optimistic that there would be enough money in the total bill for these new starts, even though they're not actually listed out. But one of the reasons we have a leg up is that, or an advantage, is that, is that over other projects that are coming forward from other states, is because we are really like shovel-ready, we are ready to go. So additionally, Southwest Light Rail has solved so many of the initial concerns and challenges about what route, how will it impact neighborhoods, you know, when there are challenges like that locally, sometimes members of Congress are like, ooh, it's not quite figured out locally, so, you know, maybe they're a little less warm about funding it. But we have solved a lot of the issues, and we have done this over the past few years. So I think it's also been a very smart for the proponents of this light rail line and all the people working on it, including our own staff here in Eden Prairie, Jeremiah being one of them, to keep, have kept moving forward to meet deadline after deadline, because honestly, by following, by continuing to go forward, it has helped us put ahead, to push ahead of other local projects from other states that are being submitted. So we were really able to have a strong voice regarding how important the funding for light rail is with Senator Tina Smith, and she too was very positive about the funding being restored. So the end of the day, I mean, we learned a lot, Ron and I did, but we also got some really great news coming out of Washington, DC. So it was a great trip, one of the best I've ever had.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, yes.
Just one quick thing, just one quick thing, that I know that some people have been concerned that President Trump's budget did not include all the new start money, and everyone, Republicans and Democrats, that we talked to, said that's no issue whatsoever, that last year's did not either, and.
So it did not.
Right, and the Congress puts it in, there's so many districts, Republican and Democrat across the nation, that need this money, that they throw money back in. And so Amy said, Senator Klobuchar said that she has no fears whatsoever that the total transportation funding bill will be large enough to encompass all this, it's just that this year, each project, in years past, the projects themselves were funded and that added up, now the total bill comes in, and then the projects kind of fight for the money. And so it's a little bit different model. But the total money, she felt, would absolutely be there to cover if it ends up being one of the projects selected. That's where it became the significance, as you said, that we're closer to being shovel-ready. So she said she really believes our project will rise to the top and it will get funded. So I mean, we, we left Washington with a whole lot of optimism.
Yeah.
That light rail's going to happen. I know everyone we asked that, is it going to happen?
I know, it's true.
Not until I guess that, I don't know, more than just signing, I mean, it's got to be, we got to start, we got to see a train running on track before I believe it maybe, but, but I think we're on our way.
Yep, that's what we heard, but just one more thing, Nancy, or Mayor. What I wanted to also say is, is that honestly, I ran for the first time in 1996, and the big issue in the city at that time was where the light rail was going to go, 1996. So it's about time, is what I have to say.
Well, thank you very much for those thorough words, great news. The next item we have on our agenda is an overview of Emerald Ash Bore, talking about our management plan and awarding a contract for treatment of ash trees to rainbow tree. Matt Born, you're going to do it, do you have any introduction to this, Mr. Lotthammer?
Yes, Your Honor, as you mentioned, it is a two-part item, one to overview what we've been working on with the Emerald Ash Bore Management Plan, and then the second item is to award that contract that is meant for treatment, not just for city trees, but also an opportunity for our residents to take advantage of good pricing, too. What you'll hear tonight is that we're moving to a different phase. Emerald Ash Bore is here, which you'll hear about, and so that makes us become more active in our levels of treatment. But I also think you'll hear about it being a very balanced way of moving forward, with balance between removals, balance between treatment, and then also a pretty robust education plan for our residents going forward, because they own a majority of the ash trees that are within our city. So as you mentioned, Matt Born, our Parks and Natural Resources Manager, is here tonight. You've seen Matt quite often when it comes to trees lately, as he was instrumental in putting together the update to the Tree Preservation Plan. The other person here with Matt, you only know him so far as the Assistant Weed Inspector.
Oh, okay, nice talk.
And Jacob Bouzien is also more well-known to us as our Forestry and Natural Resources Specialist, and so he is also quite the tree expert, and him and Matt have been working closely on this project together. So we'll stand for questions at the end of their presentation, but then also there is an action item for you to consider.
Thanks, Jay. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, it's good to be here again, Talking Trees, this time with Emerald Ash Bore. You may remember, we adopted our first management plan a few years ago. The major aspects of that plan, we're really working with MDA, gathering information, trying to figure out exactly how EAB is affecting communities in Minnesota. We had a lot of kind of history and research that had been done further east, but how was it affecting us here? So we were, we were really working with MDA to try and understand that.
That's the Department of Agriculture?
Minnesota Department of Agriculture, yep. Also, the other big aspects of that were, like Jay had mentioned, updating our city ordinances, our shade tree pest ordinance, as well as our tree preservation ordinance. Starting to, as we're doing city projects, other stuff, selectively removing ash trees that were in poor health, as we had construction projects come through, we weren't spending as much time or effort in saving ash trees, trying to get ready, and then public education and outreach, kind of letting everybody know in the city, this is coming, this is going to affect a lot of property owners in the city, so. But with the confirmation last year of EAB within the city, we thought now would be a good time to take a more proactive approach. We had gathered all that information we thought we had needed. Emerald Ash Bore is here, let's see what we really need to do about it now. The other big driving factor in being able to update our Emerald Ash Bore Management Plan was we completed our ash tree inventory. So this was done citywide, there were three major areas that we were looking at when we were doing our inventory was city-maintained properties, so our parks, our buildings, those areas, city right-of-way, and then also our unmaintained areas, our conservation areas. We wanted to make sure that we were inventorying ash trees that were in close proximity to those trails. It's been found, and there's been research that once Emerald Ash Bore is in a tree, it declines much more rapidly, can become brittle, and can become hazardous, so we wanted to make sure that we had an inventory of all those ash trees that could become affected that may then fall on a trail. So that was the other big driving factor, and I took a little screenshot of our ash tree inventory here. You can see, it actually shows which ones we're proposing to treat, which ones we're proposing to preemptively remove. The preemptively removals are in red, the other ones are in green, but I thought this gave kind of a good snapshot of how, how we found our populations, our densities throughout the city. You can kind of see in the upper center, that's Nesbit Preserve Park was one of our parks that we had already known, already knew was pretty high density of ash trees. There's a couple others, Riley, Miller were some of those, but you can see kind of what we had planned, and those removals, we've already done a majority of those, and we've already planted, I want to say it was like 80, 85 trees there, to kind of help go through. So this was obviously one that we had kind of in the back of our heads, that something was going to be, something needed to be done, you know, a couple of years ago, and that one's already been there. But you can also see some areas of right-of-way where there's a high density of ash trees, and kind of, some of them we're hoping to save through preservation, some of them we're going to be preemptively removing, replacing, and we'll definitely get into that kind of more in the presentation, is how we got to those numbers, how we got to that decision of which ones to remove, which ones to, to try and preserve. So with that, I'll let Jacob kind of take you through some of that decision-making.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'll be going over some of the ash tree preservation, removal, replanting strategies that we're going to have. So for preservation of ash trees, we're proposing to treat roughly half of all the ash trees in our city park, maintained areas, in our city parks and right-aways. We aren't proposing to treat anything adjacent to trail or in natural areas. The criteria, so we decided each tree individually, as we were going through and doing an inventory, and the criteria for treatment was it had to be a minimum of 12 diameter inches, had to be condition rated as fair or better, and it couldn't have any conflicts as far as overhead wires, or conflicts with buildings, or heaving a sidewalk, or anything like that. As, as Jay mentioned, we already solicited and received four bids for a treatment contract. We received several back. Rainbow Tree Care was the lowest bid, which is what we're proposing. In addition to treating city trees, we had two bids for private residents, so commercial properties or residential properties can take advantage of it, and it is, it is good pricing, considering it's a bulk discount, it's a three-year contract. The treatment interval that we're proposing is going to be based on the pest pressure within the city, so as mentioned, it has been confirmed in the city. It's estimated to have been here for a couple of years, it's pretty difficult to identify early on. So we're proposing a three-year treatment interval through the rise and fall of the pest pressure. So there is, there's a significant amount of research that has been done over the last decade on a number of different chemical applications for Emerald Ash Bore. It has been proven to be effective, both in research trials and in the field. On the presentation, you can see on the left, a tree that's been treated with emectin benzoyt, which is the product we're using, and then on the right, one that's untreated. This is just a graph showing kind of the rise and fall based on what other communities and what other states have seen of Emerald Ash Bore. So on the, on the bottom axis there are the number of years, so we're probably in our second or third year. So on the vertical axis, that's the population and percentage of ash dying. So other communities have seen it rise at, for the most part, an exponential rate, so we can expect the population to start to increase pretty dramatically from this point on. That being said, these projections are based off of communities that really were unable to do a lot of proactive management, like the metro area has, has seen, so we're hoping that this is going to be spread out a little bit, but I think it's realistic to expect us to start to see dead ash trees around. We have confirmed 25 already within the city. So that shows the rise, and then on the top there, it shows the aggressive maintenance protocol, so that would be the three-year treatment interval, and then once the pest population drops, we could back off to maybe a five to six-year treatment interval. So anytime we're using a pesticide, obviously, we want to acknowledge that there's potential risks anytime we're introducing a pesticide into the environment. We also want to acknowledge that losing thousands of ash trees would have a definite environmental impact. So some of the things that we're proposing to do to limit the risk of pesticide when treating ash trees is to use trunk injections, so there are a number of different applications that can be used, one being a soil drench, one being a basal bark spray, and the other being a trunk injection. So a trunk, trunk injection both limits the risk to the chemical applicator, as well as limiting the risk to possibly running into a gutter, going into stormwater, the risk of leaching into groundwater, or being taken up by adjacent plants. into groundwater, or being taken up by adjacent plants. We also want to bring up that ash trees are wind pollinated, so they are not a nectar source for bees, so it's unlikely that they're really going to come in, that bees and other pollinators are going to come in contact with this pesticide. That being said, for those who choose to do a soil drench versus a trunk injection, I just want to bring up that anytime you're doing a soil drench and there are other plants within the vicinity that are pollinator plants, you have the chance of having a negative effect on that. So that's why we definitely promote a trunk injection.
Is the efficacy as good using a trunk injection as the other methods?
It is. It's actually much better. For the most part, treatments are going towards trunk injections. You know, there are some homeowner products that are sold that you can go to a big-box store, and it'll say on the box, it protects getting Emerald Ash Bor. We do not recommend using those above 12 inches. They really have not proven to be effective at protecting an ash tree, even though they're advertised as such. So, yeah, it is more effective to actually inject it directly into the tree. Another point I want to bring up is ememectin-benzoid is not a neonicotinoid, which aligns with our pollinator-friendly resolution which was adopted. And the last thing I want to bring up is that we're treating on a three-year treatment rotation versus a two-year. So it's common to treat on a two-year cycle for this product. That's what the product is guaranteed for. In recent years, there's been some research that came out showing that it's good for three years. We've had some extensive conversations with the publishers of those papers, and we definitely have the confidence to extend that out to the three-year. So we're introducing less pesticide into the environment. So to touch on preemptive removals and proactive replacement. So when we talk about preemptive removals, for the most part, we're talking about removing ash trees before they're actually confirmed to have Emerald Ash Bor. And the reason we want to do that is, for the most part, to manage costs and workloads. The chart to the right, or the table to the right, is if we were not doing preemptive removals, this is kind of what we could anticipate for removals. So you can see, the majority of those removals would take place about seven or eight years after the infestation has started. So that would be about fourteen hundred ash trees in two years for us. So that would be a much higher workload than we're currently used to, so we would have a spike in costs and workloads, and there'd definitely be an aesthetic impact that would be very evident, versus if we could spread that out over a longer period of time, go into a park, selectively remove some, replant some, get some trees established, and come back, you know, several years later and do the same thing. So going that route, we would be removing approximately 260 trees a year from city property for the next seven years, and we would leave about 300 ash trees to succumb to Emerald Ash Bor, just because we think that's a realistic workload for us to take care of. There will be some additional tree removals in addition to this 2,000 in the back of residents' homes and things like that. That's something we're going to look into. This next year is inventorying pretty much behind houses and public-private interfaces. So that was one thing we wanted to bring up. So along with removing trees, obviously, we want to talk about replacement of ash trees. We're proposing to remove one and a, or replace one and a half ash trees for every tree that we do remove. Planting locations will, for the most part, be focused in parks and right-aways. We are proposing to replace trees on collector, you know, arterial and collector streets, not local streets, so that's not saying we won't treat or handle removals on local streets. If a resident wants to plant on a local street, there is a free application that they can apply for, but we're going to be focusing the majority of our replanting on arterial and collector streets. We still want to encourage people to replant trees on private property, so some of the ways we're going to do that is, we're hoping to have a tree sale starting next year. We're going to continue a tree giveaway that you guys have been doing for several years on Arbor Day, which is great. We've also discussed possibly putting together a citywide planting contract, similar to the treatment contract, so we would solicit bids for trees, and then a homeowner could sign up for that contract. Hopefully, there would be some bulk discounting available, and it would just make it an easier process for the resident to hire a contractor. Whenever we're talking about replanting, we definitely want to talk about species diversity. Some of you may have went through Dutch elm disease, and, you know, in those days, there were some community forests that were eighty, ninety percent elm. So I'm not going to say that we haven't improved over the years, you know? We're sitting at about twenty percent, which is lower than a lot of communities. A lot of communities are thirty to fifty percent ash trees right now. So it's improved since the DED days, but there's a lot of improvement still to be made. So the DNR did a survey in 2010 of pretty much all Minnesota communities, and with the data from that, Eden Prairie is sitting at about seventy-five percent in Ford genera of trees. So the moral of that is, we do not want to plant any more maple, spruce, apple, or ash for a very long time, which is unfortunate. They're all beautiful trees, everyone loves their maple, but there are a lot of great alternatives to that, which you're going to start seeing on city property. Some of those include tamarack. I'm a big fan of tamarack, beautiful fall color, northern catelpa, Ohio buckeye, and ginkgo biloba. So this is the short list. There's a lot longer lists. I just wanted to show a couple, show that they have great fall color. So don't be afraid to try some new species in your own yard. As Jay mentioned, public education outreach is going to be a huge part of this. There is an estimated 50,000 ash trees within our city, so that's about fourteen percent of all trees in maintained areas in the city. So if you think about that, there's 3,000 on city property, we're just a drop in the bucket. So we're going to be doing a lot of outreach as far as promoting our treatment contract to private property owners. We definitely advocate if it's a healthy, well-placed, maintained ash tree, to treat it. I mean, it's cost-effective. We'll go over some of the numbers a little later. Another thing we're going to do is keep the city's website up to date with all the management options, any treatment recommendations, any research updates. When we were doing our ash tree inventory for right-of-way trees, we kept an eye on private property and noted properties that had a significant amount of ash trees. So we're going to use that information to do some targeted mailings, hopefully this spring, just to make them aware of the treatment program, make them aware that they have ash on their property. And we're also going to be providing educational materials and educational sessions at all of our different events. So Arbor Day is going to be our first one. We're planning on having, obviously, a lot of materials available, as well as an informational session that residents can sit in on. So Matt is going to go over some of the overall cost for this program, but I was just going to touch on kind of some averages for an individual ash tree. So the average size of ash trees that we're proposing to treat are right around eighteen inches. So over a 25-year time period, the average cost to treat that tree is about, it's a little over thirteen dollars a year, and the average cost to treat that tree for 25 years is about 350 bucks. On the opposite side of that, to remove an eighteen-inch ash tree and replant it, it costs a little under 700 dollars. So we can treat, we can treat a tree for a significant number of years before we even meet that cost of removing and replanting a tree. And that's not even taken into account the benefits that that tree is providing. Obviously, an eighteen-inch ash tree is going to provide a lot more benefits than a two-inch whatever tree. The annual benefits for an eighteen-inch ash tree is about 130 bucks a year, or over 25 years, right around 3,500 dollars. And that's not even to mention just the difference in character in our neighborhood. So this is a city, or this is a picture from St. Paul, before and after a bunch of ash were removed for Emerald Ash Bor. You can barely see it on the one on the right. They did replant, but it's obviously going to be many years before you get back to the same character that neighborhood once they had. I'll hand it over to Matt to talk a little more about budget impacts.
So as most things, bottom line, what is it going to cost? What are these strategies going to end up, how are they going to impact our budget? So the plan for the, or the management plan really covers the next 25 years. So as you can see here, I've got three different scenarios. Scenario A is really if we just take those really nice, really big ash and treat those only that are in the right-of-way or in the parks. Scenario B is what is being proposed in the management plan, so that's a good mix of both, a little bit smaller but well-placed, well-conditioned trees. Obviously, it's going to be in good or fair condition. And then, also, some of those bigger ones, those ones we really want to save. And then C, that scenario is basically, if we just looked at every tree that was over 12 inches, was it fair or better condition, and wasn't, didn't have any interference, let's just treat every tree that meets that criteria. That would be scenario C, and you can kind of see how that all breaks down. We're, scenario A, little over seven, 700 trees being treated, which would mean a little over 2,400 trees removed. Basically, the cost for that, you could see over the full 25 years, would be 1.439 million. The other scenarios are a little bit cheaper, obviously, like Jacob had just mentioned. It's cheaper for us to treat a tree than it is to remove it. So as you kind of step that down, you can see how that would affect. It's not a huge number when you're looking at the whole 25 years, but obviously is significant. And just wanted to point out that the cost of removals, that's based on our staff wages. Basically, what we have, what we've found is kind of the average amount of time it takes our staff to remove a tree based on the caliber or the diameter inches of that tree. So you can kind of see how that breaks down, but basically, what that would then mean for an annual budget impact, really, it's front-loaded in the first seven years, basically, because that's going to be the majority of when the removals are. So about $23,000 for treatment of ash per year. That, again, $85,000 for removal, that's basically staff wages, and then the 28,000 for purchase of replacement trees. That's basically just purchase of the tree, the tree stock. We're hoping to use a lot of volunteer programs, a lot of volunteer opportunities to help plant. We've already kind of had some interest for this Arbor Day, doing a large planting at Flying Cloud Fields. Really, we think there's a lot of opportunity out there to be able to utilize, you know, Boy Scout troops, tree trusts, some other different organizations to really help us kind of plant those trees. So we've built a lot of these costs into our budget already, or have already been incorporated into the 2018-19 budget. Some of it isn't, so really, we're hoping that other forms of revenue, like the tree replacement fund that we just put into place with the new tree replacement ordinance, that that could help fill some gaps in funding. We've kind of seen some other contracted services that we've been able to find some savings that then could kind of help with that funding and stuff, too. So really hopeful that the plan that we have kind of put in here is kind of that happy medium, and we're really comfortable as staff that being able to pay for it and fit it into kind of our yearly budget. So with that, we'll open it up to any questions.
Okay. Councilmember Case.
Just a quick question. Are we waiting until a tree shows signs of disease, or will we proactively take out a healthy tree?
So it would be both. There are a few that we're going to be proactively removing, whether it's showing signs of Emerald Ash Bor or not. And like Jacob had mentioned, that's kind of a way for us to spread out our workload, but then also those areas that have high densities of ash, we can take out some of them early on, plant something new, let those get established, and then if we have to come back and take others out later, we can do that.
So have other cities that have more history with this found, like with Dutch elm, that some trees miraculously are immune and they survive?
I have not heard.
So it's not true in this case? They're, so they're all, they're all going to die if we don't treat them?
If they're not treated, yes.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Aho.
So when you remove trees, what do you have to do with the trees? I mean, do we have to burn them to dispose of them, or what actually happens?
Yep. So our disease tree program already is set up for that, where we haul them to our moss site, our outside storage site, and then we bring in the public energy company. They come in with a big tub grinder, grind everything up, and then they actually burn it for energy use, or energy, to make energy. So everything's already set up for, because we're in the quarantine county, and the energy company's in the same quarantine county, that we don't have to worry about crossing into a non-quarantined area. It's, everything's kind of already set up for that.
That's great. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Are we going to take out all, you know, ashes in all areas? Like, we've got a lot of heavily wooded, some of which have quite a bit of ash. And it's my understanding that when an ash tree gets sick, it suddenly falls over. It's not like a tree will stand there for a long time and finally have a problem, but it's more like, one day, it just falls over a lot quicker. So are we going to do anything with these heavily wooded areas, or are we going to let them fall over and sit there?
So the ones that are in conservation areas or unmaintained areas that aren't near a trail, aren't near private property with a shed in the backyard or something like that, we are just going to let it leave, or we are just going to leave it, let it kind of the process play out, and most likely, it will die and fall over, which is basically what we would do with any tree in a native area that dies and may sit there for a little while and then fall. It's great habitat for little critters, other animals. It's basically kind of let nature take its course in those areas.
Having those trees around, will that encourage more Emerald Ash Bor, as a place to nest and grow and things, or do they only like live trees?
They only like live trees. So once the tree is dead, it's, those bugs will move on to newer.
We don't need to worry about firewood coming in that's ash then? Like, I know elms, you had to worry about that, and so it's not the same kind of thing. Well, I'm glad we're starting to do it proactively, and because, especially in parks, they could get to be dangerous a lot quicker, from what other cities have found out, you know, whole blocks have them fall over and hurt people. So I went to, oh, maybe four or five years ago, I went to an Emerald Ash Bor presentation. But, so I've been concerned over it, so I'm glad we are doing it and having a plan for all of them. And also, with these wooded areas, that don't have trails through it, look through what areas tend to be used for various groups of people, and pay a little bit of attention to those, too, the geocaching areas, perhaps, or places where people, in fact, do go. It's not, it's not a park, it's not a trail, but you're apt to find people there. I hope we look at those, too, as places we need to keep safe, relatively safe, because this is a serious problem.
Yep.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. The price reduction for Eden Prairie residents that we're going to get kind of a contract for, is that also the trunk injection method?
Yep.
Okay.
So it would be basically the same exact thing that we're doing with all of our city trees.
And when we pass this resolution tonight, when can people start taking advantage of that?
I would think as soon as the contractor then signs it and the contract becomes effective, so.
Is there any reason to consider some sort of ban on soil drenching products because of the effect on pollinators? Thoughts?
I don't know. That may be a question for Rick or one of the directors, but I'm not sure we can effectively ban it. We definitely highly discourage it, and it's in the plan that, you know, we definitely would prefer or would recommend a truck, trunk injection method for treating, basically by, because of the different scenarios that Jacob went over.
I hope that in the, in our efforts to publicize this, that we address this issue of soil drenching, and people might want to do it because it's a little cheaper than... of soil drenching. And people might want to do it because it's a little cheaper than paying Rainbow, but Rainbow is not expensive. We had them take, check out one of our ash trees, and they treated it, and it was not expensive. And if we are getting even a better deal through the city now, there's really no reason that people should risk this. Have we started removing trees, then?
We have.
And what have we found? Have we found bugs?
We have. There've been 25 trees so far in, within city limits that have been confirmed with Emerald Ash Bore. Most of that, or all of that is kind of contained up in the northeast corner.
Okay, up by Shady Oak. Okay. And then you talked about replacing 1.5 caliber inches for each tree removed?
1.5 tree for every tree removed.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
One and a half trees?
Yep.
For each tree removed. Okay, so that's 390 trees a year. Now, Jay, is this an addition to the 200 trees that you referenced in the email to me today that we're planning to replace?
No. Last year, we replaced 236, 223, right in there. But for the foreseeable future, over these next seven to 10 years, we'll do well over 200 each year based on our estimate. So in that, 300, 350 a year is likely the next seven to 10 years.
Okay, wonderful. And then the tree sales, that's great. I'm glad we're doing that. And those tree giveaways are wonderful. And you get that little sprig of a tree, and you think nothing will happen to this. And we have several huge trees now that we planted when the kids got little saplings.
Well, this year, they're a little bigger, too.
Oh, good. All right. So go to Arbor Day, which is what day?
April 28.
April 28.
April 28. Okay. It's going on my calendar. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Sure. I move to accept the proposals and authorize entering into a contract with Rainbow Tree Care for the treatment of ash trees on city property over the next three years at a cost not to exceed $63,870.60.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you for the presentation. Is there any other business to bring forth before the council? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
[laughter][1766.22]